Yes.
Can you click the same button? This is the problem.
Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January first, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Planning Commission for Bruce Township. My meeting's start time is seven oh two. And would you please call the roll?
Yes. Ed Cupids.
Here.
Jared Vincent.
Here.
Connie Chapman.
Here.
Mike Tremblay.
Here.
Mandy Burnett.
Here.
Rick Hagelstein.
Excuse?
Randy Cant.
Here.
And Joel.
We have a call. Before we start the meeting, we ask everyone to rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Day first, all in the audience and eventually on the, watching us on the video on YouTube of the Planning Commission. This is a public business meeting of the Planning Commission, but we do welcome public comments and questions at various times in our meeting tonight. And if you've not signed the sign-in sheet, we'd appreciate it if you would do that. It's along the wall to my right, your left. The commission is made up of seven Bruce Township residents, recommended and approved by the board. In addition to the seven of us, we have a township employee, Dana Buchanan to my left, and Joe Ten Gary to my right. Dana is an employee of Bruce Township and assists us in the work that we do getting ready for it. And she also is a former planning commissioner, so she has some of the historical perspective that we should. Joe is a professional planner and working with us to provide guidance and in some cases investigates machines and boards. There's going to be an opportunity for those with questions of just general and something not necessarily on the agenda. You can come to the microphone, state what your name, your address, why you're here, and we will attempt to help you understand an answer to, or give you an answer to your question to the best of our ability. I think that's it. We're prepping everyone for the meeting. The next item we have on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. And we have two sets tonight. One is for December seventh, and the other one is for June fourth. Any questions from the committee regarding this?
Yes, December seventh, page four. Middle of page, given that we've got any dedicated sales offices. I think we should add some clarity to that. So the way I would like it to read is my recommendation for how it should read. It should be dedicated sales offices are not permitted dash wording, and then get rid of that was taken out accidentally. And then say is being added back under three point eight and three point nine because the the omission or the
It was accidentally taken out.
The
Not perfected.
If, I'm going to say the language was erroneously invented during the conversion to, the conversion of the zoning ordinance to clear zoning.
Any questions during the change? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting on December seventh as modified by my conscience.
I'll second.
Ed Cupids made the motion. Connie Chapman made the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, regarding January fourth, questions, changes, recommendations? Okay, hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the planning commission meeting of January fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Cupids, seconded by Chapman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number five is the agenda, approving the agenda as we have it in front of us. Anyone have any recommended or requested changes? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as on our sheets presented to us this evening. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Cupids, seconded by Vincent.
Sure.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, item number six is where we receive public comment. We have specific agenda items that we will be discussing later, but you can approach the microphone, state your name and address, and ask questions. You can make comments regarding general public, I'm sorry, general planning issues. And we generally like to keep it within a reasonable amount of time, three to five minutes, but we don't have a lot on the agenda. So if you need more, that's, we'll be able to. So anyone wish to come to the microphone? Name, address?
Okay, yes, me, my name is Paul Yakabachi. I have the parcel seven zero two three six on Beaver Creek Drive, off of thirty-three mile. I purchased the property back in two thousand and twenty-one in September of twenty-two, attend of the dancing discussions with Dana regarding my proposal for the site. We submitted a concept plan, I did, for a gravel outside storage yard, and I got a return response indicating that the planner comments stated the outside storage yard was not permitted under its own, under the M one zoning. Recently, I've been through the sub, and I noticed right across the street from me, there's an individual camping out in a camper with a bunch of trailers and equipment and random vehicles kind of parked on the site. And I'm not sure if that is in compliance with the current zoning as well. I mean, that's an outside storage situation that people are pretty much just parking on. And then one street over on Corte Drive, on the east side, I notice a parcel that has a number of dumpsters parked on it. And I don't see a building on that as well. I do see a job trailer or some sort of trailer, but I don't really see a building out there. And that's under the same zoning as my property. And in looking at Google Maps, I even noticed in the past that on that neighboring site on Corte Street, I believe, it looked like there was some outside storage going on before you eventually put up a building. You know, and that's the sub, you know, that my property is in. There was really no activity going on there at all. I think it's been there for a little while. I don't know what kind of activity people have had as far as submitting plans to do anything on that particular street. I do know that there's some construction equipment also being stored out there on a couple of different lots, probably from the developer, I'm assuming. But, you know, ultimately, you know, I think something needs to happen out there. And, you know, I don't want to go against the grain of current zoning, but at the same time, that current zoning is very restrictive on what can be done out there. And I think that's probably partially the reason why there's really not a whole lot going on out there is because it's very restrictive of what can be done. And what I was hoping to do is maybe speak with the planning department and create a plan that maybe I can start off one way and generating some revenue. This is a, for me, this is a piece of property that I intend on hopefully generating revenue myself on. It's an investment property. And maybe create an opportunity where we can start off with some outside storage, but eventually segue that into putting a building up and serving maybe a company that I've created a relationship with and that will want to, you know, base their company there. And maybe that will kind of like springboard other people starting to want to come into that area too and building as well. At least the shoe has to drop on somebody. And I'm just looking from an opportunistic standpoint, you know, maybe, maybe if there's a way to compromise on what the current zoning is or what maybe what I can do to kind of get things moving in there. Maybe I can start a spark there, maybe not, but, you know, I'm kind of like at a fork in the road with this property. Either I can do something with it, or I have no use for it. I would like to have some use for it. I'd like to be a participant in this community, you know, from a commercial standpoint. And I know that particular area is a growing area. So, you know, this is probably a really good opportunity to see if there's any chance to compromise on this.
Okay. Well, the round you, I think, we've built is to put together your ideas and plan on paper with Dana to get on the agenda for this commission. And we have Joe, who is our professional planner. He advises us on uses of land, changes to land, and zoning. But we need to have that ahead of time. Maybe somebody's not offered something different, but it's best if we have a plan, what you want to do, so that we can have the opportunity to survey the nearby. And if people do actually make visits to the site and for a recommendation, we will hold it on to the board.
So my initial plan was submitted in September last year. Okay, so I don't think that I can keep it inside.
No, because we didn't, there was no, no payment and no, because it's not allowed in our ordinance that there's no way cleared. Joe, clarify if I'm mistaken, but if something's not allowed, if there's no path forward, much like our applicant tonight, we changed the ordinance prior to.
So the ordinance right now restricts outdoor storage and the homeowner is restricted accessory. So it has to be accessory to something else. That's the issue that we might want to. I think really what's being asked tonight is, is the planning commission committed to that stance that the ordinance states right now that outdoor storage has to be accessory to something else? They were here hoping to a storage or move in outdoor storage or a new lease. I think that's really what.
It is, that's why I advised you that this could be the path to open the discussion to whether the planning commission would be willing to consider that or.
And if I could add to that, I'm not stuck on just that particular use, but maybe starting off in that fashion and then maybe on a plan, maybe a phase two where a building can be put up. I'd like to find an opportunity to bring someone in to utilize the piece and then realize that building would be worth it because then they can raise their business out of their office and yard. You know, a lot of companies like landscape companies may need to work out of their homes, but they can't park all the equipment in front of their house. So they need a piece of property that they can park, you know, at the end of the night and leave at the end of the morning. If they grow to, you know, a certain size where they have to be bought of a house, maybe it's an opportunity to eventually build a building there for them and house everything there. Now, that's just one thought. But, you know, as it is right now, you have to be able to build a building first and have a need for that building and to watch and move your company there before you can have any type of outside storage. I'm thinking of maybe doing it the opposite direction, not foregoing the need or requirement to put a building up. However, dazing it where I can actually generate some revenue on the front end, and then eventually segue that into putting a building at second phase. That's what I was thinking.
What kind of stuff would you store there?
Well, it depends on what the need is. But, you know, the idea is obviously to keep it clean and to keep it tidy. Could be a landscape company, could be a building supply company, maybe, that needs the outside storage for maybe for a brick supply company.
So it's not for your business?
Uh, no, would not be for my business. No. You, you know, my business is a little more of a heavy duty business. You wouldn't want my property there. And I wouldn't want to put that there and jeopardize a relationship. So I would be very selective on who would go out there as well.
So whatever you put together, you're probably concise on what kind of stuff.
Yeah.
The other thing that at least would be important is how long of a time period would it be between you during outside storage versus what we know?
Honestly, I haven't thought of that yet. I guess the first hurdle is to find out if the opportunity exists, and then I can actually visit that and identify what that time period would be. Could be a couple of years.
Joe, do you have other townships that allow outside storage that you're aware of? I guess if you don't know, you can say.
Yeah, offhand, I can't think of any. But I hope you know. I wouldn't be able to say.
Are you the only one on this, this, I'm not sure if that Beaver Creek Road, are you the only one there, or is it an industrial road, different?
Yeah, a number of different lots out there.
Okay.
There's actually.
Is it in relation to Corte?
Uh, it would be west.
To the west?
Yeah, West Street West. Um, it's interesting because there's been a sign up there by the same real estate company that I bought the lot from. I think it's been there for about three or four years now, coming soon. Better building.
There's not, there's nothing built on there, right?
Zero.
On that street?
Except for, again, the trailers and a camper across the street, but that's, those are easily figured out. But I guess, you know, that's, yeah. So no, there's nothing there yet.
And Joe, under a normal use, like is this a C one or C two usage? Then this would be covered under?
Just a M one.
I know it's M one regulated today, but.
I think it was C three.
Yeah, C three.
I'm in no position to say, yeah, because I don't have any data.
Yeah, there's got to be.
And with no data, I'd be.
Yeah.
My, my position is I don't make decisions. So if we could ask Joe to do some homework to see what other townships are paying. What zoning district's worth to be allowed under a curbs. And C three was. That's, that's the extreme. We don't have any C three in Bruce Township today.
So what would be the right path? Joe's going to do some research.
And bring his research back to us and we can talk about it. Then we may decide that if it's worth exploring or maybe it's not worth exploring. We don't, there's no answer to that.
As far as letting them know, once we have.
Yeah, I can do that.
So just to be clear, Joe's going to do some work, present it to us. Dana will have access to that, and she will have to contact you and let them know what we have.
Okay.
Sound good, Joe?
All right, that sounds good. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, so there anyone else that wants to raise questions and get some discussion going for anything not on our agenda? We have five G ongoing discussion later. And a SLU proposal, it's unfinished business for us. Gentlemen are probably here to observe how we operate.
Yeah, I mean, I could, but Dana, I already submitted all my stuff. So I'd really, I'd rather do what you guys have, everything in front of you.
That's fine, I just wanted to pass you by.
I appreciate it.
And gentlemen in the backs, anything? Anything you have for us?
Eleven D.
He's the fitness.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll get here from time to time. Okay, we'll move off of item number six. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move past item seven. Reviews, I know of no reviews that we might address. Section nine, item nine is communications. Dana, anything?
I can line.
Missions, anything? Moving toward very quickly today. So now we're to item ten, unfinished business. Kyle Dome, SLU postponed from January. I think the commissioner's over there, but we had that on prior basis. And Dana volunteered to work with the petitioner to help her through the steps that she needed to go through. And we spoke with Dana earlier. And as everyone knows, we received a lot of documents that Dana is willing to run through what we should have seen in our documents. So you want to carry us through?
Oh.
The documents that everyone should have received?
Yes.
We'll ask questions there.
It's not here. The top one was the, her website, which is for you to look over. If there's anything you don't approve of, but it doesn't say anything about bed or overnight. Her, her hours of operation were added, being the eight AM to eleven PM. The, she has just signed the second page that I included here for you, agreeing on her hours and no overnight guests. The, the, the next page, well, I'm going to skip that one because Joe's going to weigh in on a little bit. But the, the one from the fire department was okayed by Chief Whitkin. They went back for the reinspection and found everything to be satisfactory. The last item was proof that she's up to date with her water and sewer payments. But going back to the, the parking, just a side note, Joe, we have, a commissioner has, has taken it the initiative to go and count those spots. Jared came out with more than what, what this, this plan that I sent you was the original site plan with the, the development.
I stopped in there on my way here from Grand Rapids.
Okay.
And it is hard to see where some of the spaces are.
Yeah, right, yes, yeah.
So what is the count versus?
Well, Jared came up with a count. I can't remember what he said.
I got one eighty-seven.
One eighty-seven, okay.
I just counted all the spaces on this sheet.
Oh, you didn't go physically to the, the site and?
No.
Oh, okay.
So is that different than the number you had, Joe?
It is a little bit, yeah, I can double check. So you got one eighty-seven?
I did.
I can double check my numbers on continuing.
All right, then, then we'll go back to, to the motion that was given. I think that those items were, were everything. I have the motion. Does anyone have any questions or see that there was anything remaining?
I have a question. If this special land use is allowed, and on down the road, if another business comes in there, what happens to the special land use? Does that leave when the business leaves? Does it stay with the building or what happens there?
So special land use approval generally runs with the land. So for this space in particular.
But if some other type of business came in there? There is a dress shop there once, cup and comb.
Let's just say a dress shop.
Okay.
Let's go with that. If a dress shop opened in there, you would consider the special land use to have ceased. Same thing as if, if the.
If there was another business that didn't require it.
Same thing as if, if, if this business moved out and the space was unoccupied for four months. You would consider the special land use to have ceased.
Okay. One more question. And another question. They don't provide food, beverages, whatever. They're allowed to bring beverages in, alcohol or whatever. Because this is classified as supposedly a bank or call meeting room, are there any state liquor laws that have a problem with people bringing beverages into a private thing? Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of. But it's. I know, I know there's a few establishments that I look to get at. Yeah, specifically. I don't believe you have to have a license to permit that.
Yes, because they're not providing it or that. I mean, I realize that, but I didn't know state liquor laws, if there were any.
Yeah, as far as I'm aware, no.
Okay.
You can do a Y O E kind of thing. You know.
Okay.
Of the, the, the parking?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, but the record show I did count off.
Okay.
And Mandy has validated that it's one fifty-seven.
One fifty-seven.
Oh, see, I got one sixty-five.
Oh, boy.
I got one sixty-five, so. Or there are some counties in the back. Are there questions?
I think so.
Are there questions of a different nature?
Yeah, I do. I'm disappointed in the fire department documentation. When filed this in the record, it just says, okay. It doesn't say, we have revisited the site and verified that this is, this is here. So okay, can mean a whole bunch of different things. Can mean, okay, I verify that the stuff is still needed. So I think it's poor documentation in the fire department. If they in fact verify, it's a specific state down the document.
Okay.
Because when this record gets put away, if someone else looks at this and says, what does that mean? As, as an independent person, okay.
I understand. I, I will write out his and have him resign that as his intention.
I think it should also be dated.
Yes.
I dated this, but.
That should, when they do this, whether it's for this business or someone else, this is poor. No date, like not all the information. It's okay, yeah, what's okay, this, this is poor. They need to change their policy.
Oh, Mike, did you see that as a reason not to move it on to the board? Or would it be acceptable to?
I have some other questions too. Okay, so before I make that determination, provide all, the whole story rather than this part story.
Sure.
So from my perspective, the hours of operation are good. The advertised use, I have an issue with because before I came to this meeting, I want to look through this place. And in two different websites, it's still advertised as an apartment or sleeping quarters on that side of Chicago, indication. I don't know if you're aware of that. I don't know if you're aware of that.
No, I, I did a search, and I have maybe to search and find them.
If you look at Trivago or vacation home.
I just went to Airbnb.
Airbnb is not out.
Different places.
But there are two places where it does exist, as of this morning. So, if, if anything.
What, what was the other one besides?
Trivago and vacation home. So, the parking analysis, I think we have to verify how many parking spaces there are. And Joe had said they could be two sixteen. That's another fire department issue, and then the statement on absolutely no overnight stays is okay.
So I have some more, uh, fire department issue with you as well.
Okay. So, if, if, if there were any approvals, I think there would have to be some contingency points on it. And some actions taken. For example, if I were to move to accept it, I would say that if these two sites on the day of the board meeting, and I sit on the board, if they're still advertised out there, I would recommend the board to do not. Because this is inconsistent with what we discussed. So I would suggest very highly that, um, these go away. Because that's an insincere, that's an insincere to me attempt, when it's still being advertised on a couple websites at that point.
I, I think that I, I know I, I offered, I couldn't find them, so thank you for that.
About a real least five minutes or less.
Well, we asked last month that all that be taken down, so that's not your job.
Yeah, well.
Well, I think there was an attempt to do it in some regards, because the, this, this, uh, website, I think, I think it was. But if you can still find out there, it's, it's not good, but that's.
Yes, we would agree that that would come down to board.
Board. Still counting or?
Yeah, just verifying the manager.
I think I know how you get, how you got one sixty-five.
I lost things.
Yep, so is it one fifty-seven or one sixty-five? It's one sixty-five. Finalized.
Yeah, one sixty-five. So, I did a little bit of, now that I have finished the arrangements, because I took all the other uses and then all the businesses. And then I applied this shopping center to all of them, I took this square footage from this space out.
Good.
And then there are any else. And, just taking all of it together, you'd need a hundred seventy-four spaces for this site. Plus twenty-seven for the use, which equals two hundred one. If we take out the back portion of the meeting room, which is sixty-four hundred million.
That's over there.
Square footage exactly, that is used as warehouse space in the back there. Um, and I, I don't know precisely how much it's, I was conservative about how much I took for warehouse. Um, what you get is one forty-seven plus twenty-seven, which comes up to one seventy-four. So, one of those ways the site is non-conforming as is, the other one is conforming, and then it's a clear way. So it's, I, I, again, I don't know that we have the hardest numbers to work with here, because the spaces aren't really, there's like four areas given. Um, but using commonly applied estimations of usable floor area by industry, that, those are the numbers that I'm coming up with. Um, if you use the whole thing, as soon as all the shopping centers, no warehouse, then you would have a lot to go on with this use, as we apply.
So I had a conversation with someone who's a very practical thinker before this meeting. And the observation was, Mike, when you driven by there, has it ever learned property?
This has been brought up.
And the reality is, it's not.
Yeah, that's.
So I don't know how to strike, complying with the parking requirement, is to me, given that, that view, that practical, realistic viewing of that property.
And I'm, I'm probably underestimating how much the principal tenant has in warehouse space, because their showroom is not.
Their showroom is big.
Yeah, and it's big, but it's not that big of a space.
Correct.
And you try to do that, so, I, I took my best stab at the square in the back, is the part that I'm gonna carve out as warehouse.
So when you do that, that's when you get to the one seventy-four as well, including this ten.
Yeah, so that's, that's nine, it's nine spaces off site. And if you look at this, I mean, they don't have this gap here, straight for spaces. They don't have a couple here, there are, there are a few places on the site where you could put a few more. I, I, so, in my profession, one of the things we've been talking about for a decade now is, we require too much parking everywhere. Um, so, you know, I, obviously, I always have that little bit of lens, uh, when, every time I look at parking. Um, but, uh, yeah, there's definitely space for, which is, it's on the line. A land thing, if you will.
The other possibility, I don't really, you have great consideration to what if MS moves out? And somebody else wants to move in, but will not have all that warehouse space.
Like on Salvation Army was there, it was always pretty crowded.
And I'm guessing they use the back of it for the rental.
Salvation Army still have a pretty decent size warehouse space.
Probably seeing a lot of. Yeah, it's a much higher traffic business than, than MS. And this is, you go there, then you have a specific need for what they're selling, uh, whereas Salvation Army is much more of a, oh, hey, I got a few rants I'll drop in. Look around, kind of moving.
You can't predict the future, but.
No.
Someone else coming in, may need more space. Do you typically see the fear of the future driving today's decision?
I don't think so. Not really, I mean, you have a shopping center standard, or a parking standards, and it tries to account for a mix of low and high traffic. That's what the numbers is attempting to do. So, if something high in traffic in there, a lot might become a little over, but it's probably also, just based on evidence that everybody drives by it all the time. It's probably not going to ever be, uh, all the time. You'd have to, I don't even know what you have to create there. You know, probably, uh, a restaurant or something that took up the entire space, which would be extremely large as well, so.
Other thoughts, questions? The next step would be, if anyone wants some information to approve, or if you have a recommendation to the board.
Uh, I can make a recommendation. So, let me talk this through here, so I would make a recommendation to approve a special land use. Conditional upon, uh, removal, um, of all references to overnight accommodations on any known, uh, vacation or rental websites. Including, but not limited to, Trivago and Vacation Rental. Vacation Home.
Hour of operation would provide.
Yeah, well, it's a, yeah, conditional upon the hours of operation of eight AM to eleven PM that have been agreed to.
Can I add to your motion?
I welcome.
I've done the second bit before and.
Right.
Okay.
But you're not done yet, right?
He's had the next motion.
Or are you? I don't know if I have any other conditions, I feel like the firefighter, or the, uh, the fire records approval issue not.
No, that's a contingency. Oh, tear.
Two and three.
That was your motion? Your suggestion to?
Okay, uh, so, I will add the contingency that the, um, the, uh, report from the fire department is properly documented with, uh, dates, specific confirmation of the items that have been approved and signed by the fire chief. To, thank you, consistent with the first contingency that the advertised use must be consistent with those that have been approved, including meeting rooms, private parties, workshops, training classes, funeral dinners, and parties of this nature. And, uh, finally, that there will be a contingency that there's no loitering outside of business and no overnight stays.
Anyone else have anything to add?
If you can. I have a second, can I second that?
Part of me can do that maybe.
No, he was still talking, sorry.
Just have some dialogue.
Uh, let's get a second.
I'll second it. Then I would ask if you, if you would mind, then, there's a discussion.
I will do that anyway, yes.
One of the first things you said about removing all this from the site, I would give a date specific. And I would make that the day before the next planning, the next, the board meeting, which would be, what, the fifteenth?
Yes.
So by February fourteenth, and also add that, and, um, that will not be added to any. So, not only get rid of it, but it has to be, it has to stay. Correct. And then I would say, um, when you said about absolute no overnight stays, I would ask that the document be signed and dated.
It is.
But I want that.
Okay, uh, so, I, I would like to amend the motion. For item one more, uh, yep.
If it could also be noted, that we accepted the parking analysis that was given in today's meeting. By Joe, that, based on his analysis, that not including this ten, the hundred forty-seven space, I mean, twenty-seven, I think this place is two hundred seventy-four. And our current parking capacity is reasonably close to two hundred seventy-four, rest of the set.
So I do that, it's not a condition, it's just a statement.
It's, it's a, it's a statement on why we're taking a recovery. So, we have some order on record, so if anything else comes up there, you know precisely why we're doing this.
Okay, uh, Dana, I'd like to amend the motion. Which I already have written down. Uh, to include, uh, for the removal of the references to overnight accommodations, that they are, that it's permanently removed and not added back after approval is granted. Also that that is completed no later than February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Also, based on the contingency that the letter stating the hours and no overnight accommodations is signed by the applicant. And, lastly, for the record, to state that part, the special land use approval is also based on the parking analysis related by Joe, stating that the spaces needed. Excluding this, um, business is one forty-seven. Including it, including twenty-seven gives us to one seventy-four, I would just slightly under the one sixty-five that we had to fill. And I'd be happy to clean that up with you later.
Why don't you just imagine, Dana, if you do what you wrote down, and you're back to us, super friendly play.
We would like to do a little bit.
Motion, we're going to vote.
Can I, can I just stop my recording and then play it for you? I, I really, I, I, uh.
Or we could have Jared just summarize the whole thing. And then you can all look at it later.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so I will, I will summarize for everybody. Uh, making a motion to approve the special land use for the banquet center. Contingent upon, one, the removal of all references of overnight accommodations to be permanently removed, no later than February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. On all sites, uh, including but not limited to Trivago and Vacation Home. Conditional upon the signed letter from the applicant stating their, the business hours are eight AM to eleven PM, and that there's no overnight accommodations allowed. Conditional upon the, uh, statement from the fire chief stating all, uh, inspection items have been completed, verified, including the signature and the date. Contingent upon all advertised uses must be consistent with those approved, including meeting rooms, private parties, workshops, training classes, uh, funeral dinners, and parties of this nature. Contingent upon no loitering allowed outside of the business. And, uh, based on the fact that, uh, the parking analysis was done, showing the need for a total of a hundred seventy-four spaces, including the existing tenants in this business proposal, just slightly under the one sixty-five provided.
I'll second that motion. Motion by Jared Vincent, seconded by Mike Tremblay. I'm nobody name, Paul Rolter.
Connie Chapman.
Yeah.
Jared Vincent.
Yes.
Ed Cupids.
Yes.
Mike Tremblay.
Yes.
Mandy Burnett.
Yes.
Randy Kent.
Yes.
Motion, Barry. Hey Dana, when you do type that up, can you get to your board?
Absolutely.
I'd like to.
Absolutely, I, I would like to send it to Jared too, if that's okay with you.
Okay, um, let's see. We have five.
Now she has, uh, she's gonna just come to the, you know. Um, and please, the board, please, the board.
We, yeah, she, she doesn't have an account for those two, so we keep maybe her daughter, her stepdaughter, who's on that, so we're gonna get in contact with her. Yeah.
Okay, item 11B, Joe, is the rest establishment size.
10G, 10G.
Oh, 5G, I'm sorry. 5G on there. There's nothing. Oh, other than my phone shorted. Item 11 is new business, but a solar installation.
So. See what I've done. This is pattern on Columbus Township, if you might be able to tell that by sending it there. But I did swap out lower districts for layers in a language and kind of tried to suggest what I was thinking in terms of districts, and then put your feedback on whether or not you agree with that. So what this does, so we know that we've got energy providers seeking large bonds of language for the solar projects. And they're doing it all over the state because they're trying to play a lot of capacity on that. And through this township, being a community with a lot of linear values in our eyes.
They're not working. Just talk loud.
I just realized I was.
This is your point.
Okay. So we have a lot of land, the potential to use, or solar installations, utility scale solar installations. So the language that I've given you here, and versions of this have been adopted by several approaches. But it does a few things. One is that it acknowledges the difference between roof mounted, solar, and ground mounted solar. It provides a very brief set of standards for roof mounted solar, and then it moves on to the ground mounted systems. These ground mounted systems have a much bigger impact on surroundings than the roof mounted system. Roof mounted system is, um, available, depending on where you're just on. Whereas when you put these on the ground, even in a small array, they are taken up space that was not previously occupied, right? So we split, the ground mounted solar installations into three categories. Small, where it's less than a tenth of an acre affected by the system that's being installed. So this is going to be for a house, basically. That's, that's about all you're going to get in terms of power out of a system that's small. We're, we're suggesting that that could potentially be a principal committee use in all districts. We could provide it as special land use as well, we've talked about that. This is how it's been done in some other communities. When we go to medium systems, this is on some, this is something that's is taking up slightly more than a tenth of an acre, up to five acres. That is listed as a principal committee use in the RS district only, and a special land use in M1 and R1. So your second largest lot, residential district, and then your, your M1 industrial. And then the large, this is anything over five acres. And I'll tell you right now, a five acre site is a small utility scale system. However, the kilowatt hours you can get out of a five acre site does count as utility scale. If it's over five acres, then it's a special land use and it's only available in your two districts with the largest lots. And we didn't, we kept it out of M1 because that's trying to do something completely on M1, it's tax, tax base unemployment. And you're not going to get that out of.
So would you say over five acres, it would be, require an SLU?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
And then if it's over a tenth of an acre in the M1, the R1, it also requires. We've got some height restrictions, and that applies to both roof, the roof mounted and ground mounted. Roof mounted, we're really just trying to make sure that these things aren't sticking way off the building, basically. We want them to be more flush, a lower profile.
What about from a older home versus a newer home with different buildings and standards? Any consideration there of the weight on an older roof?
Sure, yeah, you, you might be able, you, we've given a little bit of leeway. You can, you can have a five foot height difference. So if you, if you're not able to fully apply your panels flush to a roof because the roof can't support it, you are able to do things with other systems to get a little bit off roof. Yeah, that, that is, that is an option for you, the way this is for you. And then for ground mounted systems, we've got a height limit of 20 feet. Now, these systems usually are not 20 feet tall. But that's the height limit that we've established in a few other communities. We can talk about whether or not that's going to be appropriate. But with the agrivoltage systems that have recently become more common, where farming activity is still occurring on the site in addition to a solar array, that 20 foot height is where you start to get to so that you can move equipment around on the site without being impeded by the solar panels. You start to need more clearance. So that 20 foot height might come into play if you're looking for something that's maybe not exclusively a solar facility and it also has agricultural activity continuing on the site. Other highlights, I guess. We, we don't want this mounted on any kind of impervious surface. These things don't have to be mounted on impervious surfaces. If you put wings in, and there doesn't need to be a concrete slab on it. If you've got a transformer or battery storage facility, you might, you could put that on a, on a concrete slab. But the panels themselves do not need a concrete slab, so if you're looking to have a situation where not creating a bunch of impenetrable surface that farmers just can go right off of. And we also have a little backstop. If there is that transformer or a storage facility on the site, and you're creating more than 4,000 square feet of impervious surface, you have to have a drainage plan that's prepared by a registered civil engineer, showing how stormwater is going to be managed, and demonstrating it runoff from the site, using definitely see the aeropulmonary runoff rate. We've got some maintenance things that you're using something to clear it, that's to get out of your stormwater collection systems. We have abandonment clause in here, which basically requires a security so that if a system does become abandoned and needs to be removed, the township would have to remove the structure to affect its control.
If it's a large site, is that something the landowner would have to do?
Depends on your agreement.
Yeah.
Typically, the provider is responsible for.
Unless they go broke.
But, well, exactly. If it went bankrupt, and all of a sudden. On the site, you need some means to affect that facility. So security is, is probably the true.
Like a bond or something?
Yeah, we, we do that now with the, the cell towers.
Exactly, right, yep. And that's what you, you need to require that as, as, and, and, you know, if you are a, let's say you're a large landowner, you have a seven acre site or something, and you've got company that's running the panels, goes belly up, and suddenly there's a lot of problems with the panels. My guess is you would ultimately have recourse to some other company that would come into work with it. But, and it would be great for them to just acquire it, they might have to do an installation or anything like that, just, we're, we're most of the cost. But we do need to make sure that in the event that one of these systems is replaced and has not been removed properly, and make sure that it gets removed properly.
If someone went out of business and left because maybe it wasn't viable anymore, you're not going to get another company to come in.
Well, I mean, if the actual.
And then if all the panels and all the stuff is shot, you're not going to get somebody to come in.
If the actual method of generating electricity becomes unviable in the future, that would obviously be a problem, and, yeah, all these facilities suddenly start to be abandoned. But again, we need this security to ensure that we can remove anything.
You say we, are you referring to township?
Yeah, the township, exactly. The township could contract with someone to remove them. I mean, you use the money from the bond to pay off the contractor. Keeping ground mounted systems out of front and side yards, we do that with accessory buildings too, so it seems consistent not to have those installations in a front or side yard here. And then it has to be accessory, the, the small and medium systems are going to be accessory to a principal use on the site. Small systems have to be approved by a planning commission if they're occupying a 2,000 square feet of area. That'd be fairly spread out, right? So bringing it here to make sure that everything is in order. If you're clustering them, like most people avoid it, they're not going to take up that much space, especially if you're just running a house. Now, if you were running a farm with them, you might need more, so you might start to approach that 2,000 square foot thing, which would still be a small system. And then in, in other circumstances, it's basically a building, permanent electrical. And you have to provide a sketch plan showing that you're doing it properly, you're leaving setbacks that were established in there. Medium systems, things get a little more rigorous. Those are all subject to planning commission approval. Any medium system is going to be subject to planning commission approval. Some of them will be approved as special land uses, depending on the district, and others will be principal permitted uses, but they all come here. You have to meet the setbacks of the district, but they can't be less than 30 feet from neighboring property lines, even if a side setback in one of those districts is 20 feet, they also have to improve from that. We have a green belt requirement, and that's based on what you're adjacent to. And that green belt can waive certain conditions apply, if it's more than 100 feet from the property line, you're not going to be putting green belt in. And there are some other circumstances where that would be the case. For instance, if they're really short panels, they're probably not going to create that much of a nuisance. And you do have to indicate your green belt on a plan, and there's some standards for what needs to be planned today, so that we actually get a screen. And a performance guarantee. And then for large systems, they have to meet all those standards of medium systems. But they've got a larger minimum setback and just a couple other little things that they were kind of amped up the green belt a little bit too, but fairly similar to the way we treat the medium systems. So if you have any questions, I'd be good.
First, a thank you to Connie for bringing this to our attention. Probably something that the planning commission has had done, but since Connie has a large piece of property, she, she was astute enough to point this out to us, so thanks, Connie.
That might be a problem.
Yeah, and Joe, thank you for putting this together. And now, I, I guess one of the things that's driving this is, I, I read that 60% of energy from renewable sources by 2030, that's the state of Michigan's goal. So that's why the power companies are being so aggressive with solar. So anyway, Joe, I think there's a couple of things that need to be done to the ordinance. And then I've got some questions on the ordinance, but one is, I think we need to define what a roof mounted solar energy system is and what a ground mounted solar energy system is. Those are capitalized terms, but they're not defined anywhere.
Do you have some definitions for those?
So those, those should be added. Do we need to address VIPVs? You know, those, you know what those are, like, building integrated photovoltaics, where the system is integrated into the building itself. I saw that definition in an ordinance from Putnam, Michigan, and I, and I didn't see it in yours. I just wondered, do we need to address that?
Well, I guess it's a matter of policy. Most of those systems are pretty, I mean, they are a building integration. They're part of the building, they're, they're not an add-on. So I don't know that there's necessarily a need to tragically do separately. I, I'm, I guess I'm open to, to hearing otherwise, but they're, they're, they're integral to the design of buildings, so I don't necessarily see them to, to address them.
Okay. Under roof mounted sol, solar energy systems, under that putnam, they talk about permanent issuance. I don't know, we don't have, talk about permanent issuance at all in ours.
Yeah, you would need an electrical permit, so.
Is that number four in B? I guess, it says, subject to building Canada on electrical inspections.
And that assumes that there's.
Yeah, exactly. A permit would be implied. When I put my solar panels on my house, an electrical permit is all. There are some heavy inspections, using all kinds of equipment going in, but that was, that was it, just some electrical inspections.
Before this meeting, I asked Connie if she had read this magazine. You guys don't get it, only I get it, that I'm a trustee. But there was a nugget in here I saw that I wanted to mention to you, is it says when you grant a special land use, maybe a provision should be added that shall not place demands on public services and facilities in excess of available capacity. In other words, you don't want to, you don't want to put something up that you can't address, like a huge fire. That was the example that they gave.
I would say especially if you have onsite battery storage, that would be an issue, because that's, that's where you're going to get.
Like the Tesla car, they just caught a fire and they couldn't get it out?
Yeah, because that's, that's the thing with looking at mine on, is that it's unlikely that it will catch fire, but it does.
You can't get it out, yeah.
Yeah.
It just takes like 10 times much water.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we want to add something that would give us an opportunity to deny a special land use if, if, if the current capacity of the township couldn't address an emergency need.
Sure.
In case of cars, they actually are showing a big tarp, like, product that they put over the car itself.
Just further.
Yeah, you just, yeah, drop it on top.
Carrying in the trunk?
No, the fire truck.
The fire truck carries fire truck.
Another thing they point out here is, is they, the need for a decommissioning agreement. This is one of the things that Connie had spoken about last.
Wow, we talked about the ban.
Yeah.
If they go bankrupt, they leave you with a mess.
Yep, yeah, you need, you need to secure, yeah, the decommissioning agreement is there on the same. Yeah, you need, you need the security. Yeah, the decommissioning agreement is there on the same. It could be a companion to the security. And you still want the security, of course, but it could actually require an agreement. And that would be something you could, of course, um.
What the trouble is if they go bankrupt?
Right.
No, the decommissioning agreement would just accompany the bond.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, you would hold over credit. So, what you have written for the security, you have the two sections of the medium and the large, right? But not on the small.
Yeah, the smalls are not going to be.
Okay. And the statement is basically the same. And I had one question. At the very end of it, it says, "After being given reasonable time to remedy the problem." But once you want that performance guarantee before you even let them start?
Yeah, it does, performance guarantee has to be submitted before you let them start, so that's not clear right away.
Yeah, to me, when I was reading this, it's almost like that wouldn't be required until such time that they weren't able to remedy the problem. At that point, time is too late. What are your thoughts on the decommissioning? You have a little, do you have a chance?
Well, I have them for wireless communications facilities, but not for solar. But, this principle is the same.
Was there a decommissioning agreement on the town, on the town property? Would the way that's written apply, I guess?
Yeah, most likely with modification.
It's just changing what the decommission.
Exactly, yeah.
And we wouldn't want to forego the bond, the cash, right? But then, then over time, let's say this thing's in place for twenty years, that bond is probably based on cost and time, so. I don't know, who's the Thompsons?
So, you can't account for inflation?
Yeah. You know, I might get a bond requirement to be able to revisit it periodically, so that there's always enough money to take care of something in case the company does go belly up to ten, to fill it out.
Often it'd be a thing like you try to put Melon Street, something in, where you have to fund it and so much to it a year?
Yeah, I think.
Like add the possible inflation to the bond every year so that it does go up?
Is there, is there a language that we can?
I, I'm fairly certain you can do that, and if not, you can have a legal every five years that requires some.
I think that would be better. That would, that would at least help to displace.
It's like just disagreeing over the increase, or you know what I mean?
Well, you could put language in there based on some type of economic factor that's published. Do you guys ever use economic factors?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, the federal government publishes. I know when I was in industry, we used to have economic factors that we would use for different facets and services.
Yeah, you can kind of, as long as it's published, you're going to be able to figure this out, you know.
Something that just regularly.
The rate of inflation or something like that, or something.
Yes, published in the, yeah. Finance or times or whatever, like right period.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if I go, it's used to write applications too.
Right.
Yeah, without, so.
That's it. Anyone else? Anyone have a question to?
I have. The max height of twenty-two. I think that's too tall. The concept of having them tower over and to be doing anything underneath would be terrible. It would be very bad, even a large pot. So, I'd like to see that reduced.
Yeah, it's a free standing thing, twenty feet tall, yeah.
What was the reason, Joe? I think he said, just allows them.
Not like farming on a solar panel.
I think farming, you might get twenty-five. You're twenty-five in standing.
Plus, you would set up there poles to hold it up, and you're not going to be farming or anything.
You wouldn't have a family?
Pardon?
Well, that can actually be an asset. So, aggregate stakes, when you're dealing, it's still very small. And it's primarily due on the Europe, on smaller farms. And one of the demonstration projects that I've seen was one in the Netherlands where they were growing certain varieties of buried tomato under the panels. And the presence of the panels actually prevented evaporation and reducing the amount of water that was needed for the crops. And also, these were raised on crops. So, the shade of the panels actually benefited from crops. So, in the case of those specific crops, it actually worked really well. And these were being handpicked, they were not like a ton line, hard to stick.
Yeah, they're going to affect the shade.
Yeah, so, so in that case, I mean, it was perfect. You may not quite have that situation.
Because you get the labor.
None for you. Two for you.
That's pretty hard, as well, like storage, and who needs? Laborers, to do that intensive work is a problem. Nobody wants to do it.
Yeah, one other thing that I think you might consider, it's not even here, but let's say you are letting up, like you'll go out of ethical choices, for example. What do you think of the idea of some sort of requirement that a plant around? So, like a native plant, planting or something like that, you know. One of the things that you're doing a lot in the plant is, is you're putting one of these facilities, and you have to put native prairie plants in underneath them. And part of the thinking there is, all right, let's say this solar panels are in service for forty years. After forty years of native prairie plants, growing, dying, rotting, growing, dying, rotting, you're going to have amazing soil on that site when the panels are finally decommissioned. And it actually renews the farm owners for the long term, if you're planting.
Are you going to end up with a bunch of weeds that have to be maintained, or are you just going to let it go wild?
Well, I mean, there's certainly ways to manage it. You don't necessarily have to. And it is actually.
Then the goats need some layers.
Yeah, that actually.
For the old ones, yeah. Yeah, when you did any grass.
But that, like I said, that is something that's been done, and it's something to think about if we want to get specific.
I think we need more research. I don't know what they do with that great big solar farm up on I-69, BioCare.
DTE.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I mean, how many one maintains the stuff underneath it, or like just let it go, or, I don't know, like, yeah.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what they've done down there. They went off I-96 and lying, I don't know if you said. I believe it was just grass, and it was like, right?
How long do you suggest? You're very wide. But the weak answer when you ask these questions is, by lowering the height to twenty, does that kind of?
Yeah, what's the need for the twenty feet, even if you did have someone planting crops underneath it, you know? So far as I know, they're that tall. So, I don't, well, that's to the peak.
It's.
I mean, is that standard, or is that something that the provider finds is a different target?
I, I mean, it probably varies, but yeah, anyway, I think it was just, I think, to, first of all, setbacks, and secondly, allow the owner to be able to, but first, definitely to. But, you know, we could serve it lower, it's not.
We don't have anybody.
No, but it's.
We could start out lower, right?
Get it figured out.
If it doesn't make sense, you could. Any other thoughts, Joe? You've given up tonight. You continue on.
Yeah, that was good, thank you.
An ongoing discussion, but you have updates. Okay, you want to move on to fitness establishment side?
Yes, so, obviously, recently we received a new inquiry about constructing a large fitness facility, this is in this biggest urban district. On the land, it's a northwest corner of McHale Thirty-three Mile Road, that's got a C2 zoning by a consent government. So, fitness uses are principal committed, using C2 facilities that are under five thousand square feet. So, if you have a question, you may be allowed to, five thousand square feet gymnastics facility, probably not be very practical. So, we did opt to study whether permitting larger fitness uses in the C2 district, like for here. So, we benchmarked it, and we'll see against some other ordinances to see how the community uses or handling it. We don't actually have to lift that far, it's Washington Township, we're related to the south. Permit's physical fitness gyms and similar training facilities under five thousand square feet, those floor area has a permitted use in the LC, local commercial district. And then it also permits the same use as special land, which is going to go over five thousand square feet. So, basically, they take that five thousand square feet as a cutoff, and if it's over that, it's a special land use. City Farmington, Farmington Hills is a very similar thing, it's B2, the business district. They have a threshold of thirty-three hundred square feet there. Farmington Hills is a pretty different size environment from Washington, so lots. Many smaller spaces in Farmington Hills, so I think they have a smaller threshold, just because of the history of development in the city versus the township. City Marshall is almost a mechanical situation as well. So, what we don't do is permit the larger versions as special land use. We just say, okay, it's permitted, it's under five thousand square feet, and if it's over five thousand square feet, well, it's C3. So, the intent statement of our, our C2 district is to provide the redevelopment plan, shopping centers, and buy a range of pizza, food and services on one site. Without a good provision for offshore parking, as intended, such as services would be provided at the intersection of B and C. Giving your thoroughfare is accessible for various areas of this community. And even though a consent document was what gave us that sanction, at that point, I can be more sure it qualifies. As a, even with that intersection of B and C thoroughfares, that are pretty highly accessible. So, the current language just says that permitted uses include physical health establishments under five thousand square feet. And the draft language takes a couple of potential approaches, so one is you consider adding order fitness uses as special land use. And just under special land uses, say physical health establishments, five thousand square feet. And then we could adjust that slightly to kind of move which category exactly five thousand square feet fits into. No greater than five thousand square feet would be permitted use, and over five thousand square feet would be a special land use. Because, you know, when someone's designing a whole unit in space, they might try to cover that, kind of weigh on the ground number, you know. So, the five thousand would be permitted usage right now. It actually, really technically has to be four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine square feet to be permitted in the district. So, I think we could just clean that up as we go. So, I, what do I, I guess, what do you think of that approach? Does that sound like something that you want to maintain? I like the option to. Myself. This is another thing to think about, is already lots of shopping centers in the metro area. When I say lots, it means lots of. You have larger spaces, a lot of them, that, you know, these drinking water uses are finding it harder to stay open now, and fitness facilities are taking over more and more. For instance, my hometown in Connecticut, the old IGA grocery store, it's a big old gym with people on treadmill. Right in the front window is there, and I think it's way over five thousand square feet. But it works, you know, and it's got, there's a tenant in the space rather than just like a few years in the space. So, just thinking into the future, it could help you keep some of your, your larger tenant spaces in the C2 district occupied. If something moved out of.
So, would we make a motion here for you to provide the language for us?
Well, it's really there.
Or would we just do the public carrying?
You can do the public carrying for language, this is.
This is all say, unless there's some. Yeah, it's pretty simple change.
It's very simple.
So, I'll make a motion that we set a public carry for march for the amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding physical health establishments. Dana, when you are ready to roll call.
Sure, sure. Jared Vincent?
Yes.
Connie Shatman?
Yes.
Mike Tremley?
Yes.
Ed Cupids?
Yes.
Mandy Burnett?
Yes.
Randy Kent?
Yes.
You want to address the interested party?
No, not at all.
Yeah.
So, what we just. If you can, if you can hear me.
Yeah, I can hear you.
So, what we just did is, is we're going to have a public carry to change our ordinance to allow the type of establishment you're doing under a special land use. If we, if we approve it at our march meeting, it'll go to the board meeting in March for them to adopt the change, because we can only make a recommendation. If that change is accepted, that means a building that you're proposing could be accepted as a special land use, which means you would have to apply for that use. And then it would come to the planning commission, we would review your application, and then make a recommendation to the board on whether to accept or deny. And then the board would then find a final approval. So, it, it's not automatic, but it's an avenue.
Right. One question. If it goes in March, and it gets approved in March, can I have it posted for my SOU in April? Will be adopted by then?
It would be, it would be enforced by, by April, yeah, because.
Has to be published, right?
Exactly, that's it. I know there's thirty day requirements and different things.
Four, four, forty-five.
The planning commission.
If it's approved in March, do I have that ability to have?
If it's approved in March, do I have that ability to have to file by April to, you know, speed the process up, not to try to get it to be prolonged?
Well, you're, you're, but if it's denied for whatever reason.
Oh, yeah, yeah, exactly. If it's denied, it means that.
But since our meeting is the first week, and there's the third week, is there enough time to publish?
Most likely, it would be May.
May.
So May is probably.
May is probably the best.
But you're probably gonna do it concurrent with the site plan anyway, and that's gonna take some time to put together, so, I don't know, you know, you might. It's a matter of how.
Contact the planning department, they're, they're, they're liable.
Well, like I said, if, if it's approved and adopted, I just, I wanna move the, the pieces forward to make sure that, you know, we, we cross that piece out, our eyes, do the, you know, you don't end up coming up short, or, you know.
So what, what you could do in the meantime, because I don't anticipate that this is gonna get denied by the board, or, or have any public interest in it at all, hardly. Um, is probably get with the planning department and figure out what do you need for special land use? What, what, what does a planning commission need to review? And then you can start.
And then red packages, you know.
Yeah.
And my question is, was that your intention, five thousand square feet, or?
No.
No.
No, it's.
Later? Or were you planning how many?
Around thirty-six.
Okay.
Give or take.
I remember from when you were here.
That's how large the facility is in Chesterfield. Um, and I was looking to just kind of do a similar facility in, you know, in this little. And we got a couple of those.
How big is the one on thirty-two mile?
Eighty. So, about, about the size of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Didn't, didn't you say before that you were, you were, it was still, you said five years left on your currently?
We, uh, technically have four years left on our lease with a, uh, three-year extension in our discussion. So technically, it's, I think, seven years total that I have left on at least, so, um, I would like to try to be in, if it moves forward, done, completed, built, and grand opening sometime, hopefully in congruency with the end of my existing lease, which is four years left. I really have three more years to play with if I really want to.
Well, I.
That's kind of the time.
Just knowing how construction goes.
Yeah, exactly.
Probably starting at the right time.
Trust me, I.
And get it.
I'm starting now for, for a four-year plan. And, and I think that's about the right timeframe that we're on realistically to get through the special land use process, get the, the, the property locked down, and start the development, the approvals for the building.
Oh, yeah, I, I would definitely say that's the right. Time frame. I see too many people coming, needing to do something yesterday, and it's like.
That's not.
Okay, um, we'll move on to item twelve. Comments from committees and consultants. Joe, anything more? We have no committees, I don't have.
I know, I know. We do have that one. That property on Van Dyke. Remember, they were supposed to meet in March? Was that discussed?
I, I do have an update, though, on that. Um, he brought me a plan today, a revised plan, close to what Joe had suggested might be more palatable. Um, and he brought that in just today. So he will be bringing that, um, to the next meeting.
Next month?
Mm-hmm.
A recent request, or a contractual zone request?
Yeah, I, I honestly, I, I just, it was near the end of the day, I just had a little bit of time to look at it. It looked like it was on a well, um, individual wells, and it looked like three duplexes.
We'll take a look.
Yeah. Yeah, is that what you, oh, I.
Yeah, it's a little more duplexes.
Okay, item thirteen, comments from commissioners.
I'd just like to share with the commissioners that the, uh, board trustees did approve our tree preservation amendment at the board meeting, and they did accept our annual planning and zoning report unmodified. And there were a lot of compliments from the board, or at least from the supervisor, that, that he thinks very highly of his plan. So, we can't say not to you guys, yeah.
No, don't be over. I have a comment. After looking through this, special land uses and some of these things, um, we changed our ordinance, uh, special land use where it did not have to be in a freestanding building. That is still what it says. So isn't that, doesn't have to be changed?
What does not have to be in a freestanding? Is that a?
Oh, you need replacement pages because we need to change the language.
But I looked online, it clears on me, that hasn't been changed either. It still says must be in a freestanding building.
Because of that, it was actually only adopted.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get that updated.
Okay.
That, that, that has been updated.
After looking through this, I saw that.
It's been updated at my office, but it's not.
Okay.
Yeah, because we have to get the tree preservation.
Yeah, let's get, let's get our stuff updated.
Yeah, so I was, I was waiting until the tree preservation stuff went in, so.
And this is another, the planned shopping center, C two, this thing, am I not, under B, permitted uses, personal service establishments under five thousand square feet? And then number twenty-three, personal ser- service establishments, five thousand square feet or greater?
They both listed under permitted use.
Yeah.
Or one listed other special land use?
No.
Uh, I felt, felt. Is that you see it better?
Here.
Actually, that's something that could be administratively resolved, because.
Because it's saying.
You just eliminate the second one, and you take out the square foot.
Yeah, well, I thought it was under.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
After looking at all that, it's like, what?
You've got too much time.
I just saw that today because I did my homework, because I wasn't supposed to be here, I'm supposed to be in Mexico.
That's right.
So it just popped up.
Hold on.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments?
Uh, yeah, uh, Mike, did you want to mention about the, the red, how we resolve the, uh, uh, the fire chief's, um, ability to, to approve that, that radius?
Uh.
Or just, just do what you.
Joe, can you confirm that that's true?
Oh, yeah, so, two different things, radius of a circle and.
Well, he approved something, we didn't see it on our plan.
Right, so, radius of a circle is what I was looking for, he was looking for turning radius, and turning radius is more. So, two different radii. So he was seeing the numbers, it was actually on the plan, it just wasn't the number I was looking for.
That was when we were approving the private road quadrant.
Quadrant, yes.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that, thanks for closing that issue.
I was, yeah, Dana and I talked about it, and.
And I kind of had.
Oh, man. Ah, I got you.
Okay, any additional comments?
I'm still hoping that Dana gives us a board members' contact info sheet update.
Board members' contact info update. Um, why don't I email everyone that tomorrow?
Okay, yeah, because my old sheet planning commissioners, uh, Blake Taylor, Dan Walker, it's.
That's the alumni list.
Yeah.
Okay, look for an email tomorrow. All right.
At least you don't have test card on there.
My name got put out with that.
Item fourteen, adjournment, I'll make a motion to adjourn. So moved. Second by Tremley. Anybody in favor?
I.
Bois Nade?
Record, I think. I love you.
And everybody, why didn't you get to know?
Cause we're supposed to find the Dallas park this morning, and.
I will.
Oh.
Uh, sorry, the.
So I.
Question?
I screwed up all of our plans.